Caught her if he comes back. Oh, there he is. So I'll give the invocation. Hallelujah, Heavenly Father, we come before thee today at our commission meeting here in Boxer County. We appreciate thy hand in all the things that we do. Heavenly Father, please let us continue to help those people that are downtrodden or are less fortunate than we are. Please bless our armed force services and our people that keep us safe here at home. Please bless those people that had the accident in Tremont today, that they might be able to be watched over and that, and we are thankful for our emergency first responders for the things that they do to keep, keep us alive and, and well. Please watch over our nation and bless the, bless our leaders and the leaders in the world that we might be able to continue to go for peace and, and not have so many strifes and dissenting ideas that we'll be able to continue to look forward for freedoms and liberty. Please help us that we'll be able to go home in safety and we ask these favors and blessings in the name of our Savior Jesus Christ and amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'm not sure I can, can I second the motion for minutes if I wasn't here? If he, should I better wait till next week? He can make the motion. Okay.
Yeah, I would make a motion that we approve our minutes from April 7th.
I'll second that motion. I've got a motion by Commissioner Scott, a second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Administrator review reports, future agenda items, former agenda items.
I think the only thing on former agenda is if we just wanted to hit COVID briefly.
I think so.
Obviously, the mask mandate is now off. If you would like to wear one, you are certainly welcome to. If you're in groups of 50 or more, it's still recommended to, to have one on, need to, need to do that. I was in a store yesterday and they had a container that was, I don't know, it was like a 50 gallon drum of a hand sanitizer and they were 40 cents a bottle. So I'm assuming that means that we're on the back end of COVID if you can get hand sanitizer for that cheap. So if you haven't been vaccinated and you would like to, there's really no, not much of a weight at this point. You can get into the other clinics. They're open to anybody 16 and older. You can do it through the health department side or the federal partners. The federal partners are some of the pharmacies. You can get it at Walmart, Kent's Pharmacy, and so it's, it's readily available. Our numbers are still pretty low. We're ticking along between 75 and 85 active cases. Things are looking good. We appreciate everybody's work and support of all of this craziness over the last year and hopefully we're on the other back end of it. So.
And Mara then just said we're getting to be into fire season, so I'm glad she brought that up since it's so dry. That's one thing that we should be not looking forward to, but it's going to happen before we know it. Would you pull that up, advance that?
Oh yeah, we can do that.
It was brought to my attention this week that the SBDC had been left off the funding source for the last almost 18 months. So I don't know if Tom, if you've heard of that. So the small business development wants to be on the next agenda to bring up the plain fact that they didn't get paid for last year and we're halfway through this year. So there's some other things we've been looking at of in that arena. So it just makes me, I guess, question if they haven't missed it for 18 months, then why are we proceeding forward? So can you come next meeting and like let us know what that line should have been coming from and, and give us some more information about that?
Small Business Development Center. I believe it was funded from the RDA.
Was there something else we were going to talk?
I don't think so. Nothing else I had to remember.
I can't think of anything either. Call me before, let's see if we can get all the information before. I didn't excuse Commissioner Hatfield. He's on a family vacation. So hope he's having fun in the sun. Okay. We will head to 11:35, the request to sign off on a temporary beer license. I don't think anybody's here for that. Yeah, we had a company that has been getting an alcohol license from us for quite a time and they, they changed vendors and it was kind of a mess for a little bit, but we got it done in the time, 30 days. Like have to put my, everybody out here did, went above and beyond the call with Steve and Chrissy and Mara's office to make sure that that got done for the hill climbs. So they had just changed who was doing it and it was a big mess. So anyway, I'd entertain a motion to approve that temporary beer license.
Everything's been approved through the attorney's office. Everything looks good.
And the sheriff's office, sheriff signed off on it.
Very good. I would make a motion that we approve the request to sign off on the temporary beer license.
I'll second that motion. I've got a motion by Commissioner Scott, a second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Peach Days, Mo, have you got, anybody coming up with you? I'll make Joan come up. She's just sitting back there. Hey, I'm glad I'm seeing her here too. You're fun. Thanks.
So I'm just here for my yearly, can I use the, hopefully, the county grounds for Peach Days?
Excited are we?
Yes, yes, we are very excited. Talked to the health department. They were very positive and thought that we'd be fine by September and so we'll continue discussion with them, of course, but we wanted to go forward with all planning and for the event to be held as in the past.
That's awesome.
We don't have anything else scheduled that weekend, do we Cody?
I'll look at the schedule and see. I think it should be.
Should be open.
It is September 11th. The 20th anniversary of 9/11 is Peach Days, the Saturday of Peach Days.
Are you at liberty to discuss the theme at this point?
Well, I wasn't sure if masks would be mandated, so the theme I've come up with is covered in patriotism. So that's what we have right now. It might change, but it's going to be a patriotic theme, of course.
Hopefully. Get rid of the covered part.
Yeah, we're, we're working on some fun stuff, but I mean, it's not approved yet.
Our UAC one coming up in May is hindsight is 2020 and then it says one at the end. So that'll be pretty good too.
Very good.
Plans on lip syncing and things because I might not second this if you.
Yeah, I, I thought about that when I was coming over and as of right, we were going to not do it last year, but then we ended up not doing everything. But it is a really favorite part. It's so much fun.
I actually got an idea.
Oh, see Jeff is going to take the lead. And I think, I think our city council is working on it because I was talking to them a little bit. So I think we might do some. Because it's fun.
Wonder if we can get our sheriff's department involved?
We've tried.
He said zero chance.
With their police department. That's what I'm going to, yeah.
Just checking. Very good.
That's funny.
Okay, I guess I would make a motion that we grant permission for the use of the county grounds for Peach Days to the Chamber of Commerce.
On September 11th, 12th, 13th?
10th and 11th.
10th and 11th. Okay. I'd second that motion. I've got a motion by Commissioner Scott, a second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
We start setting up the night before.
That's what I thought. That's what I was wondering. I figured there was three days there.
In past, we aren't changing anything.
Okay, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mara, this should be a quick one.
Okay. We sent out a request for qualifications for the fair book and we just, we sent it to four different companies and received one back and that came from the news journal.
Okay.
And so.
Well, they do an online one also though this year because I heard really good things about the online book last year.
I don't know. I can certainly talk to Sean about it.
I think that'd be a good idea, don't you think Chrissy? The online part, I mean, honestly, there was a ton of people that were.
We can PDF it even if, if they don't have that option.
If they'll allow you to PDF it, we could just have it out there on the, the county site, on the fair, fair page. And if it's downloadable, I mean, there was a ton of people walking around. So.
I think so.
I'm sure there'd probably be. And right now it's year to year, but in the RFQ it says that we could extend it up to three years. So I don't know if we want to do it year to year or.
I just assume do it three years and go from there, not having to worry about it year to year. If that's okay with you and you and you.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'd be fine with that Mara, to be able to just say that they've got it for the next three years, especially since they were the only bid. Honestly, if there was somebody else that were bidding, I'd say maybe we should bid it out every year, but.
Since we need to formally approve that. Go ahead and make a motion that we grant the printing and the production of the, the county fair book to the Boxer News Journal for the next three years.
I'll second that motion. I've got a motion by Commissioner Scott, a second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. 11:46 was scratched, so.
Guess we need 11:44.
Did I miss one?
That's the one that got added for the amendments.
Sorry, I missed that one.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we amend the minutes for March 17th, 2021, as outlined by our county clerk Marley Young.
I'll second that motion. I've got a motion by Commissioner Scott, a second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye. I'd make a motion that we amend the motion that was made on February 3rd, 2021, to be a reduction in the amount of taxes paid rather than a change of status on the property for the Gallegos.
I'll second that motion. I've got a motion by Commissioner Scott, a second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Bill, you're up.
Thanks, Bill. So the, the last commission meeting that I was at, we actually opened the chip oil and asphalt oil bids and documented those down. That gave me time to do a little research into it.
Will you pull that mic towards you?
Do a little research into it and also ask for some specifications on the oils and get those back from the vendors that were in qualification of it. I'll probably do this a little bit different. We're going to start with the last three items on our list. The MC800 is 32 tons is what we put out there for. We had two bids on that, one from Suncor at $585 per ton. With freight, it comes up to 617. And Idaho Asphalt came in at $597 per ton. And they also had a 3550 per ton on the freight on that. At that one, we'd like to go with Suncor out of Tooele at the 617. The GSB 88, 70 tons of that product. It is sole specific product to ASI and that comes in at $698 with freight. And the CRS 2 in smaller 30, 30 ton and it would be picked up in 900 gallon capacities. The best deal on that for us is going out to Blackfoot and getting it through Idaho Asphalt at $400 a ton. We had two other bids in that regard at Suncor. They were at $425 per ton. Peak Asphalt was at $400 a ton, but Idaho Asphalt would be the best vendor in that regard. And those would be the, the three products that we'd like a motion on to award contract on those specific units.
Okay, I entertain a motion.
So are you not ready to award the CSS 1 and the LM CRS 2 at this point?
What we'd like to do is reject those two quantities after doing some of the, the specifics as far as looking at the certification documents on the oils. Plus I got information back that the state bid that was done through UDOT later on actually came in at a lower amount, so it would be a cost savings. And I think to, to make it appropriate for our bidding process, what we'd like to do is just reject those two items across the board on all bids.
And go to the state.
And go to the state in that regard.
No, we appreciate your research on that. You do a lot of work and have come up with some innovative ideas to keep the quality there and still save a lot of, a lot of dollars. So we appreciate that. I would make a motion that we approve the other bids for the MC800, GSB 88 and the CRS 30T as outlined by Mr. Gilson.
I'll second that motion. I've got a motion by Commissioner Scott, a second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Bill.
For public information, that we could also add that we will be under the state contract for the 1,200 tons of LM CRS. The state contract is through Peak Asphalt and for the Tremontan area, it comes in at $458 per ton. And the CSS 1, which we are going with a QSE facet emulsion, which is new for us this year, which will be helping us save time and frustration. We'll be able to shoot it and get off of the road and get the traffic on it faster with that product. And it's coming in under state contract at $340 per ton. So thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Appreciate you. Tom?
Okay. This is to create a new policy within the county. It's for our, the telematics system that we are installing in county fleet vehicles. That's the GPS and cameras. These systems are going to be installed in the Boxer County fleet to address safety, accountability, compliance and other customer service issues. The policy is not intended to be punitive or to solely just monitor county employees or individual employees. The concept behind this is just to make sure we're getting good data back to make better decisions regarding the fleet and how to best operate it. Some of the exceptions that will be carved out is in discussions with the sheriff. His patrol vehicles will not be receiving a forward facing camera in them. They already have plenty of cameras in those vehicles and this would just be a redundancy. They have some on-call vehicles and in those on-call, on-call vehicles, there will also be no camera. And the GPS can be activated and deactivated by the, by the driver. And at this time, the county fire and EMS services, they won't have a camera installed either. But really, so then the other part that as if, so the system has in it, it will alert if there has been accidents, harsh driving, other issues, those will come to the fleet manager, who in this case is currently me. I will then have the responsibility to immediately pass that on to the department head and also the county risk manager for them to further investigate. But really that's.
Yeah, I read the policy this morning. Don't have any heartache anymore about it?
I think it looks good. I'm guessing that this has the potential of helping with inventory as well. If when you review the data, you know, quarterly, semi-annually, annually, whenever it's reviewed, if you see that a vehicle is simply not being used, there's virtually no miles on it. Maybe time to surplus it.
Yep.
Okay. No, I think it's great.
But no, I appreciate the commissioners working with me, the sheriff's office, the road department. I mean, everyone's kind of had a step in this. I've used some people's Guinea pigs with it. I used the road department, Dale, Buildings and Grounds, Gina. So I appreciate everyone's, I know it's not exactly been a, hey, this is awesome, but I think it's a good policy. I think it will help save the county money, make better decisions.
Got to entertain a motion.
Very good. I would make a motion that we approve, do we have a policy number on this?
Didn't see it.
15 dash X, the county fleet vehicle telematics systems GPS policy.
Yeah, I mean, so it will be in, the fleet policy is 15. I wasn't sure what section it would be going into as, so that's why it just has X.
We'll just call it fleet policy then.
There you go.
I think you probably ought to leave that to the discretion of whoever puts it in there, what number, how to number it.
Okay. We'll just go with fleet policy.
I'll second that motion. I've got a motion by Commissioner Scott, a second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Tom.
Awesome, thanks.
Jenica, you going to bring up your PAs, please? Thanks.
Okay, I just have an amendment to policy number 10. When the Affordable Care Act was passed, there's a stipulation in that 1,000, 1,000 page bill that we need to provide break time for nursing mothers. So that means we need to provide a break room with electrical outlets free from intrusion. So it needs to have a lock and a refrigerator and then we need to allow them time during their shift to take care of that. So the policy number is 1017.
So even if we don't have anybody that fits that criteria, we still have to.
Yeah, we have to have it anyway, but it has come up now. So we need to make sure that we get it into policy.
All right, can we double that as a cry room? Just asking.
You're the boss.
All right.
Sorry, Commissioner. Sorry, Steve.
This is, this is a new one. That's not one I'm familiar with. Guess you can put anything in 10,000 pages.
Yep, pretty much.
Okay, I'd make a motion that we approve the policy updated as reflected.
I'll second that motion. I've got a motion by Commissioner Scott, a second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have fun. And if you're not a part of the closed session, you can. Yep, you can bolt.
All right, my first item is the Boxer County Local Transportation Corridor Preservation Fund 2021 Priority List. You should have received a copy of that. It basically outlines a wish list of projects from the county and the different cities and towns within the county. First page is corridor preservation and on the second page is maintenance and construction as the fund can be used for both. So if a city wants to have, apply for funding for a project, that project must be listed on this fund. This is the, and a new list is, is prepared and adopted each year. This is the list for the 2021 funding cycle. And the COG approved this list on the 5th of April, 2021.
I'd entertain a motion.
So this is just the priority list. This isn't the final, final, it's just.
Exactly.
The wishes.
Yeah, it's just if they have a project that they might get to this year, they put it on this list and essentially to be eligible for funding, it has to be on this list.
All right, very good. I'd make a motion that we approve the Corridor Preservation Fund 2021 Priority List.
I'll second that motion. I've got a motion by Commissioner Scott, a second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next item is applications CPF 21 dash 05. This is an application submitted by Tremontan City. They are calling it BR Mountain Road Phase 2. So this application is for right-of-way preservation. The applications, so it goes through a scoring process that has been adopted by the COG. And basically large, large cities in the county are required, large cities would be qualify as the county, Tremontan, Brigham, Perry and Willard. They're required to score a minimum of 25 points to be eligible for funding and this application scored 36 points. So it was above the minimum requirement and there is funding available in the fund for it. The total estimated project cost is for, is $350,000. So a packet was sent to you, which kind of outlines, has the application, the scoring sheet and also outlines the estimated costs for the project. So they're, they're estimating the total at 348, 348,421. And that includes a 20% contingency. Any funding that isn't used on the project goes back into the fund at the end of the project.
How soon are they going to have them done? Did they say that also in the bid?
Yeah, so they, they basically have, have it, I think they just put in the near future, but this is something Sean's currently working on. So my experience with Tremontan at least is that they have them done within the same calendar year that the application comes.
That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, they're pretty, they're pretty quick about it.
I think it's almost to the point where some of these ought to be, that should be in the application. We should start doing a time date stamp because some of these are drug on.
Yeah, it's usually the, it's really mostly the older ones that have drug on. Tremontan and Brigham, they've, they're pretty good about getting them done within the calendar year or, or two years at most. Some of the Perry, where they've had administrative turnover as well, as well as turnover with the mayor. There's some from them that are four and five years old that they're just wrapping up. But yeah, the newer ones, the COG actually at your direction adopted a policy that said that, that the, let's see, project had to start within like a year and a half and had to be completed within two years. So.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion on the CPF 21 05.
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we approve CPF 21 dash 05, Tremontan City, Bear River Mountain Road Phase 2.
I'll second that motion. I've got a motion by Commissioner Scott, a second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
And Tremontan's second application, oh, that was another thing. In addition to now having a timeline that projects needed to be completed, the COG also passed that a city could only have up to two applications open at one time. So it kind of forced them to get it done if they wanted to jump on another project.
Do they have a monetary limit that they impose on?
No. Sufficient funds, right? Yeah, sufficient funds and if they, I mean, they have kind of set a precedent. For example, with Portage where there was funding available, but they wanted them to scale it back to fit within a, you know, a smaller budget. Portage was able to scale the project back about 50% of the original request. So. So this, this one is, it's listed incorrectly on there. I don't know how you have it on yours, but it's CPF 21 dash 06. So just the next, next application, but it's BR Mountain Road Phase 3. So they just have this project broken up into multiple phases. The scoring sheet on it, it scored, also scored a 36, so it exceeded the minimum. And this went before the COG at their meeting on the 5th and also received approval from the COG there. The total ask here was $155,000. Their cost estimate comes out to 154, 647. So again, they're requesting the 150,000 and anything that comes up shy of that would go back into the fund.
Okay. Very good. I'd make a motion that we approve CPF 21 dash 06 for Tremontan City, the Bear River Mountain Road Phase 3.
I'll second that motion. I've got a motion by Commissioner Scott, a second by Commissioner Summers. All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Scott. Do we have a running total of what's left in there now?
Yeah, do you want me to email it to you?
Yes, please. Okay.
You're talking about the current fund balance? Yeah, can you CC me on that? That was the next question I was going to ask. Thanks.
That's scary. I know the fund grows about $650,000 to $700,000 a year. But other than that, and it was because of Scott's quick stuff that we even have this because it was put in in 2007, if my memory corrects me certainly right, and I was put in in 2012 and we weren't, didn't have access to these funds until that time. And then they moved them over to the county. So they were holding, what, $7 million at the state for us at the time? Until that time, and then they moved them over to the county, so they were holding, what, seven million dollars at the state for us at the time?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly how much.
Pretty close.
Two thousand and fourteen when we actually found out that they existed.
Yeah.
The state was.
We missed out on some matching funds at the first and stuff which didn't make me very happy, so. But no, it's been a good thing so far, so we appreciate all you guys' work.
I'm kinda anxious to see what it was this last year. I would be a bit surprised if it actually grew a little bit faster with the, the number of registrations and the things that was going on.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Good.
I know these guys tabled it last week when I wasn't here having surgery. We're talking about the parcels owned by Boxer County. It came to our attention, I'll bet it's been five or six years ago, the amount of parcels that the county owns. I would just like to see if we could put out an RFP, Tom, to maybe. Have some realtors look at this list and see if they would like to tackle it. I don't think we'd probably wanna go to county employees and have it done. If they could get a list and tell us how much they would give us to, give us back to get it, put it back on the parcels, if you know what I mean, so basically. If they sold a lot, then we get ten percent back in a finder's fee, and then it would be put back on our tax rolls. I looked through some of the parcels and it's, what, sixty pages long? But, I mean, most of them are out west, but then there's still an opportunity of even out west. If the county owns so many parcels around one parcel, we can make it a conforming parcel instead of non-conforming. They might not be able to get a road there, but they'd still pay taxes and. I mean, I know that there's a thirty-acre parcel up in Portage, a forty-acre parcel out in Bear River City. And talking to some of the realtor people, there's just nothing on the market now, so I think that if we could do something like this and put some more parcels back. Not only in the market, but get it back on the tax rolls, I think that would be a good thing for Boxer County and the taxpayers to be able to help get this done, so.
The one thing we would have to do is we definitely have to scrub the list before they started listing things, so we don't see a for-sale sign out in front of the courthouse. Fairgrounds, because there are, I think there was about a hundred, I think there was at least a hundred parcels. That we actively use, there's buildings that we want to hang on to, and so we'd have to scrub those and pre-approve it.
I don't know, how much will they give us? Enough to build a new one?
Anything for sale?
No, I think that's, that's a great idea, but like I said, I seen. Lots in subdivisions that we've had for fifteen years that have gone up and nobody bought them, so there's just. There's a lot of stuff out there I think should be put back on the tax rolls and. So I don't know how, if you wanna get with me, Tom, put out an RFP. We talk about percentages and have you got a problem with that, Steve, of putting that back?
Basically, what you're saying is you're just gonna market those through a realtor.
Right.
Give the realtor a list of properties.
Would we need to make a change because that is not the way it's done right now with the surplus property policy?
I think what you would do is you treat it as a group and you run through the surplus property policy.
All at once.
But you'd have to identify which parcels there are.
Okay.
And the proposal that you're trying to get approved.
There was, there was a bill passed last year, but it was only for first and second-class counties. At SB one sixty-five. We're gonna try to hopefully get that changed to include third-class counties, because basically it said that we could give it to, like Habitat for Humanity. You know, different nonprofits that we could actually give these lots to and not have to worry about going through any process. So, but as of right now, it's just first and second-class counties, so. Okay, any other questions on that one? I like your idea about scrubbing the list.
Well, I mean, so. This has been an issue for the county like for ten years.
Oh, I know.
I believe Commissioner Scott actually already has this assignment to do this. Like, it has been talked about for, forever, because there's so many departments that are gonna be involved in it. It's the Recorder's Office, it's Scott Lyon's office. Because the majority of those out west parcels, they are non-conforming.
Right.
And so the county can't do anything with them until they come into conformance. And how the checkerboard is out there, it's never gonna happen.
Well, except for we had somebody contact us and they said that they noticed that the county owned the properties around them. And we told them, yeah, but it's still non-conforming. You can't build anything around a road. They said they just wanted to own the property, so.
There's nothing right now preventing that person from coming to the commission and.
Right.
Buying that parcel.
Right. And that's what we said, but, you know, what about the thirty and forty-acre parcels that.
My understanding was you're not talking about all the illegal parcels, you're talking about different parcels.
We're talking about different parcels.
Because you're right, if it's illegal parcels, that wouldn't work with.
Right. I'm talking about all the other parcels that are out there that are just.
These are ones that have been struck back to the county, or how did we get them?
I have no idea. You look at the list and you're going.
I think it was tax sales that were struck back.
Why do I have?
Usually, if it's struck back to the county, it's because it's worthless.
Well.
I mean, if there had been a value to it.
But worthless to you and worthless to somebody else. Have you seen the stuff that's been selling? I mean, I don't know why we're sitting on something that we deem worthless when other people are.
Because we don't get any money off of it. Because currently, it's any money that goes above the taxes goes back to the owner. So there's no incentive for the county to go and market these to make money for someone.
Well, besides it gets put back on the tax rolls? If somebody went and bought it and put a house on it or did whatever, there's no, there's really no. For us to do. I would think that that would be not, not be the truth.
If you're talking about some of these parcels, I'd be interested to see a parcel that someone could put a house on that's been struck back to the county.
So that forty-acre parcel out in Bear River City, or the thirty-acre parcel up in Portage?
So those aren't struck back, those are.
So they're county-owned properties.
Currently we're leasing those.
Yeah, for thirteen hundred bucks a year. So, anyway, those are the, those are the parcels that I'm looking at.
It has to me like probably what ought to happen is we ought to look at that list and see what could, could be narrowed down to before we go too much further. I don't know if we should be doing that, but.
I mean, that's the thing is, as the auditor, I don't.
Right.
Why would I make those decisions?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. No, that's.
I'm not sure who would be the one to do that, but we need to look at the parcels and say, okay, this is one that maybe somebody would buy, this one's not.
I think we, I think that's the same, we're putting it out to an RFP and let some of these realtor companies take a look at it and do the work and. Come back and say, hey, we'll give you whatever back, and these are marketable pieces.
But we'd wanna scrub the list first.
Yeah, yeah.
Would there be anything to give them though, because? I mean, if, if.
Well, there are the parcels that we own that we're leasing, I'm sure, but that's really not, I don't know who handles that stuff. That's economic development.
Yeah, well, we've tried that.
If it's the commission, if it's me, I mean, it's really not.
Doesn't seem like it'd be an auditor function necessarily.
No. But, but do you do RFPs, or do you want us to do an RFP? When it has to do with tax, basically tax reform, or these'll go back on the taxes.
But so I mean, I guess the question is, what is the RFP for?
I would say to see basically what you just outlined, to see if any of these parcels are deemed worthy of being bought and put back on the tax roll. If there's any interest in any of these parcels that we own.
I don't know how to word that.
So basically, you're, you're gonna put it out to realtors to see if they were interested in looking at the parcels?
Yeah. And then they can market them after we decide on what realtor, realtor wants to do it.
And these would include both struck back and other parcels?
Anything that's not, non-conforming, yeah. Anything to put it back in the tax rolls. I just don't see why it's just sitting out there. Like I said, it may be junk to us, but I've been. Seeing a bunch of stuff that we deem junk that people are buying.
That we lease, we're getting more right now through the lease than we are through property taxes.
Unless they put a subdivision on it. So. I can see that happening in two of those bigger parcels, so. Okay. You got any other questions?
I don't.
All right, I'd entertain a motion to go into a closed session to talk about.
Pending litigation.
Pending litigation.
So moved.
I got a motion by Commissioner Scott, a second by Commissioner Summers, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Jenica.